Ms. Carron, I thought you got some students here from Rock Hill. Latest of the place to come on up to the front. Ms. Carron, do you want your news? Who we've got tonight, I'm sorry.
We have Hadi Dillon. And she's our Vice President of Public Relations. And we have Chandler Quillen. He's our Vice President of Fundraising. And we have Hallie Berry. And she is Vice President of Neighborhoods.
... To the flag of the United States of America. To a republic which stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna move right on our agenda here. Items to add to the agenda. We did have some items to add to the agenda. But we got a new printed version out. I think it covered everything. So y'all don't have anything? I need a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Ms. Edwards. Got a second from Mr. V. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Approval of minutes. Our last meeting was September 4th for regular meeting. Y'all had a chance to look at the meeting minutes and have any questions or...
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Houseright?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Sally. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, approval claims. Y'all had a chance to look at our expenditures or stuff. Are deals coming in? Having questions? Of any particular item? School board is moving on.
Make the motion approved.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally. Got a second from Mr. Hood. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Okay. All right. I'd like to shake hands. All right. I'd like to read. We got a recognition of Scott County Public Schools System retirees. They've been there. They've done dedication years in for Scott County. And what at least we can do is honor them here tonight. And Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Smith will take it over.
Appreciate it. Retirees coming out. It's one of our favorite meetings to have is to honor those people that have dedicated their lives to the betterment of kids. And tonight, we have several here. But you all will bear with us. We're gonna recognize all that maybe couldn't come out tonight. Those that are here, you get to come up. We get to shake hands and present you with a resolution. Okay? Our first is Kathy Thunkhauser. She retired back in the winter. She was our school court leader. All the things that she worked with currency in Scott County for several years. So if you don't care, let's give Ms. Thunkhauser a round. I do see Ms. Londa Bowen here this afternoon. I know that when Ms. Londa retired, she was pre-K at Duffield. I know that she did pre-K at Shoemaker. I believe maybe PE was in there at some point in time too. But that's the best my memory has.
Come on up this way. She come up, Travis. Tell us, where do you camp? What are your thoughts?
I started out at Duffield. I was a PE teacher for four years. And then after that, I went to kindergarten. And then I went to pre-K in Hilton, Shoemaker, Weber City, Duffield. And that's why I ended at Duffield. And I loved every moment of it. I loved the kids and I missed them. I love being retired though, but I still love my kids. I still miss them. Where are they in the grocery stores? They're running naked and wherever I go. But yeah, it was a great job.
Ms. Hannah Colperson. She was manager at Nicholsville Elementary School. So if you don't care, let's give Ms. Colperson a round. Obviously, a common theme in some of these. Nicholsville also, we had our mass specialist, Michelle Jennings, retired over the summer with us. And then she was stationed in Nicholsville. She worked at several different schools. Her primary school was Nicholsville. So let's give Michelle a round. We have Mr. Phil Ogle here this afternoon. Mr. Ogle was bus driver with us. Mr. Ogle, I know of at least two routes, I think, during my time. But I think you had a few different routes when you were with us. What kind of... What routes did you drive for a record?
Well, I'm sorry. I started driving school buses in March of 1961. And had Taylor County College and Cracker's maybe Bethel Road down. Then I drove for two years and then I quit that and went to work at Key School for 34 years. But during that time period, I was a substitute driver. Then I retired from basement in 97. And I drove until last year. Thirty years. But I drove the big monster around for the time. I'd like to mention too that God's School Bus at Scott County has been like a family thing. My uncle, Old Piter, he grew up on Big Mox. And he owned his own bus and rode that. And I started driving in 61. Then my dad drove for 31 years. And now my son, Anthony, drives that around. So wouldn't pay a lot commission too. Highlight of my bus career was in the May of 1961. Me and a classmate drove our senior class to Washington DC. We didn't sell phones. A lot of our parents didn't have phones at home. But it took us 12 hours to get there. And Roger Scott, he passed away like sure. He was a classmate that had to do that. And another highlight of that trip, I saw President Kennedy in a presidential parade over there. He was in the same limousine that he got obsessed in. And it's ironic, his wife had on the same colored dress that she had. And he was obsessed. But things like that still are in your mind. But I did appreciate y'all doing this. And one thing I thank you for, that God blessed me to do this. And I'd have an accident, it's not why I built it, driving school buses. Sure enough, thank you.
We also have Mr. Bill Laddington retired this year. Bill was a mechanic with us at the bus garage. So let's give Bill a round of applause. And Ms. Patty Decker just retired with us. She was reading specialist at Nicholsville Elementary. I told you, there's a theme here with Nicholsville. She retired just a few days ago. September 30th was her last day with us. I know Patty was her, I believe I was her principal or assistant principal at Weber City. And then she transitioned into reading specialist. I believe she started her career at Nicholsville. So let's give Patty a round of applause. We have another Patty. Patty Sampson retired out of our school board office. Patty was the special services administrative assistant in the school board office. She worked with Randy Robinett in special ed. Before that, Patty worked at Gateshead High School. She was our guidance secretary there. And was a sorely miss. A great woman and wish her all the happiness. Some retirements, give Patty a round of applause. Also in our school board office, Ms. Tammy Quillen retired this year. When she retired, she was our elementary supervisor. Tammy and I go a long, long ways back. When I was young, I administered the career as an assistant principal. She was my principal at Weber City. We showed a very happy retirement. Let's give Tammy a round of applause. Ms. Jennifer Frazier also retired in our office. She was the secondary supervisor in Scott County Schools. Jennifer and I began our career in central office. My first stint in central office. We shared an office in the basement. Kind, hardworking lady. And let's give Jennifer a round of applause. Also in school board office, which we had big changes this year too, is Ms. Carla Carter, who is here tonight. Carla was my right-hand woman for several years. She was our HR manager in the school board office. And we work in personnel. It's important to have those fantastic people that work with our people on a day-to-day basis. And Carla is definitely one of those people. Carla, I know a little bit, but tell us a little bit about your career.
Well, in 1999, I started Gate City High School, working in the office. And I was there, oh, anyway, I think around 2013. I went to the middle school, I believe it's around 2013. I was there three years as bookkeeper. And of course, there was two job openings came open at the school board office. So I didn't apply at first because I was kinda on the fence about it. And finally, one day, I thought, well, I just wanted to take a shot at it. And come to find out, I got the job working with our front desk. And then the HR job became available pretty soon after that. So I was at HR, I think, about seven years. And I really loved that job. It was a good job. It was a stressful job, but I learned a lot. And I really, it was a good, everybody was good to me. And that made it special. So thank you all.
We have Ms. Ned Parker retired with us. She was our cosmetology instructor's, her last position she had when she retired. I know that she worked administrative assistant in the school board office. I think she worked a little bit as administrative assistant in schools too. But Ned, again, good teacher and is definitely a nice, so give Ned a round of applause. We have Ms. Suzanne Hill, who's a teacher at Nicholsville Elementary. I told you, Nicholsville had several retirees this year. Ms. Hill was one of those gold standard teachers. Good, hardworking, caring teachers. And we appreciate her years of service. So let's give her a round of applause. Mr. Vernon Farin just retired. And he was custodian at Duffield Primary. Don't know that Vernon was the custodian when I went to Duffield, when I was a kid. But it was soon thereafter, I think, that Vernon came down there. Good man, good hard worker. Let's give Vernon a round of applause. We have Lisa Bishop, paraprofessional at Fort Blackmore Primary. Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence. She worked in several different paraprofessional jobs and is sorely missed. So let's give Lisa a round of applause. We have Helen Jackson Cook at Rock Hill Intermediate School. Retired this spring also. I know that Helen drove bus for a little bit in Scott County. She's also a custodian at several different spots. So let's give Helen a round of applause. I do see Ms. Charlotte Livace is here tonight. I know that Ms. Livace was a teacher at RCI. Ms. Livace, I don't know if you've been anywhere else. I don't know if RCI was the only spot, but you're getting ready to tell us here.
I would be glad to promote Rock Hill Intermediate. That's the only thing I said, when I moved in there, we know as teachers, you're subject to be moved. First of the year, middle of the year, any time of the year, right? Yeah, you're giggling. You don't want to talk about that. But I did. I spent my whole entire career at Rock Hill Intermediate, sixth grade, in the same classroom. So when they started talking about changing the carpet to a different floor, I said, no. Leave my room alone until I'm out of it. It shouldn't take too much longer. I have a new granddaughter, six weeks old today. And she's gonna be my pride and joy for the next few years. So I'll be able to teach her. Our first principal was Ms. Renee Dishner. So she was a new principal. I was a new teacher. But I was familiar with her through substituting previously at the Rock Hill High School. And many years, I did volunteer work in Salt Lake County with the bands and at American Red Cross clinics. So it was a very good pleasure. And I'm very privileged to have been a teacher for Rock Hill Intermediate all these years. Thank you.
We have Ms. Allison Kimbler. She was special ed teacher at Shoemaker. She left us. Again, it's a common theme here, such caring, hardworking people that we've had. Let's give this Allison Kimbler a round of applause. Gay Sanders was the custodian at Nicholsville Elementary. She retired this spring. Good, hardworking, caring person for our kids. Let's give Gay a round of applause. Susan Carter, who is not here tonight. She was the guidance secretary at Rock Hill High School. Ms. Carter was there when I was at Rock Hill High School. So I remember from my early days. And just a person who loved kids and worked hard every day. So let's give Susan a round of applause. Last, but certainly not least, who is here today, is Mr. David Glenn, who was a teacher at Nicholsville when he retired with us. I do know he was at Fort Blackmore, but that's all the journey down.
Coming to Duffield.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Glenn.
Richwood, West Virginia.
I want you to know, I did come back. I couldn't stand retiring.
Thank you all. I was inspired to become a teacher by my dad, who was a teacher for 30 years. My dad was not here. He was in battle. And that's, he inspired me to work hard, working. I do it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Retirees, would you all be willing to have a picture, right? Am I right? I'm gonna get something serious before I can quick sniff. All right, our next agenda item is we've got Mr. Dave Rhodes here. He's gonna come and tell us about some good news. We got some funding for two of these. And we're gonna get it handed over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board.
You probably don't know.
Okay, well, probably doesn't need to. I'm probably allowed to know if that's asked. But it is humbling to come right after all of those impressive people. And clearly, it's what makes your community special. So I really appreciate it. Congratulations to all of you. 1961, I was only three years old then. So tonight, I am here to report that we have good news. Thanks to your staff, thanks to your colleagues. We received several good bids on the proposal for the renovations of both schools. And as a result of that, the recommendation we have is to pass a resolution that was passed last week by the board of supervisors. You need to take an action and hopefully hear positive vote. And that is to select, as a recommendation, capital one, for a 20-year financing at a fixed rate of 4.6%, which was lower than what we had estimated. We talked about about 5%. And it is fixed for 20 years. But likely, we did the energy performance contract that I have been looking for, which we all, especially Mr. Ferguson. This is prepayable in hollow or part in literally just seven years, 2032. So we can prepay it like we did the energy performance. We don't want to, we don't have to. That's your decision, meaning the school boards. It's fixed payments, as I said. And so the goal here is to pass a resolution that was prepared by bond council, Sam Anderson, and I think certainly by your school board attorney reviewing that. I'm happy to answer any questions if I could. Again, when I was here a couple of months ago, we asked you to let us go forward with the process. We put that process together, got some good results. And again, here tonight to hopefully have you take the next step. If that gets approved tonight, and then if the EDA approves it next week, that's when their meeting is, then we'll move to closing in just a couple of weeks later. So that rate is fixed, however, and that's the important thing. So I'd be answering any questions. It's what we hope for and a little better. So I'm glad I really need to owe those hearing.
There're gonna be two payments a year, one payment a year.
It's gonna be two payments a year.
One on principal, one on interest.
Yes, so we're gonna have an interest payment coming up. Very small interest payment coming up in, I think, February. And then really, the full payment will be in the 27 fiscal year. You've already got monies set aside for the 26 fiscal year. So we're gonna actually have, we, meaning the school board, we're gonna have monies sitting there over and above what the debt service is. So think of that as sort of like a capital reserve. And that'll be good for us to have to use as we pay. So good situation.
Anybody ask any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
Not me, Mr. Rhodes, you keep following. Can you refund it?
We can, we can.
How difficult is that?
It's not difficult. It just has to get a certain amount of interest rate difference. We have to set the monies up until 2032. It's like a seven-year escrow, if you would. And then we could, in effect, pay that off and then convert to that lower interest rate if that happens. And so we've got that going. Yes, sir.
But for seven years, it's we're locked in to the 4.6.
That's right. And you may recall, when we talked to you, I talked to y'all, we said, let's dual track this. Let's look at the state program, DPSA. The problem with that, we saw, is, number one, that's locked in for 10 years. This is locked in for seven. And that 10-year is in hold. So we like this more flexible. Again, we've done refinancings for you before. We've done it for the EDA and for the county I have. We'd love to be able to come back and say, we want to refinance, not to extend the debt, but just to lower the actual payments. That's right. So I hope I come back. That's the goal.
So if the interest rates do fall, we're not guaranteed another big rate, right?
We don't know. We would put it out again. We would put out a bid and say whatever banks or brokerages want to do. Again, what we're hearing in the talk at the Fed is maybe they're gonna drop it another couple times. Maybe another 25, 50, maybe 75 basis points. More than likely, we're gonna need over 75 basis points to really make it worthwhile. We probably need a solid 1, 1 and 1/4 percentage drop. So we'll see if we get that. But what happens though, is as we get closer to 2032, you think about it, this is gonna be a 20-year financing. And if we, let's say, are closer, let's say, we're now in five years from now, where the final maturity is only 15 years out. So even if rates come down, let's say, 3/4 of a percent, we're closer to the next faring, the refinancing, when we'd be out 15 years. So we get that possible benefit as well. So it's a little complex, but that could work for our advantage. So we'll see. But we've done that with you before. Like I said, I would be delighted to be able to come back and say, here's a known savings, not extending it at all. So that's why we care so much about the prepayment, because we want flexibility.
Any more questions? No, I need approval of a resolution, as a resolution, capital one, public fund. I got a motion from Ms. Edwards?
Second.
A second. Mr. Sally, all in favor?
If we could do a roll call, Ms. Chairman? That's usually what they want.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Mr. V? She gonna move?
She's not required. You can move.
Mr. V? Mr. Sally?
Yes.
Mr. Houseright? Mr. Hood? Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
V, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll be in touch.
I don't try and run anybody out, but we do have some business that might take a little while. I usually take a break. If y'all, we got a couple of items that might take a little while, but you're welcome to stay. But if you, if you want a break. I'm running out, but you're welcome to stay. Thank y'all for coming. All right, our next agenda item is 2024-25 school activity account overview. Mr. Chuck Ridwell and Mr. Dustin Mayes.
I've got Dustin with me tonight, and he'll give the overview that while we did. We went to every school in the county and met the bookkeeper, the principals, and looked at the different accounting systems, reconciliations. Dustin can pick up from right here.
My name's Dustin Mayes, CPA. I work with Chuck. By normal, we did the yearly annual agreed pump procedures regarding the school activity funds. Those procedures involve analytical procedures that tested for, for a internal control structure and whether those internal controls were affected. From our agreed upon procedures and our analytical procedures, we didn't see any material weaknesses in that internal control structure. We did see some deviations, which are listed in your report that you have, minor infractions. But for the most part, everything looks, looks like a normal way, good as normal. And we also helped provide assistance in preparing the documentation for your auditors with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates. Scott Wiegman, I believe, is the CPA over there, your auditor. We helped prepare those, helped get those documents together. If any of the bookkeepers had any questions or concerns on what they needed to include, we tried to assist in that. And then we helped get that stuff to the school board so that Scott can pick that up. Also, this year, like last year, Virginia, the Virginia Treasury Board had a change in, in regulation that requires the fiduciaries of the school activity fund bank accounts to verify the balance each quarter based on what the bank reports to the Virginia Treasury Board. We assisted the school board in that and helped on a quarterly basis with that matter. Everything was in good condition with that as well. Never saw any deviation on that. And like I say, we're very grateful for the opportunity that y'all have provided for. for the opportunity that y'all have provided for us for several years, and we hope that we can continue to be of service for you. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those questions regarding the report or regarding any of the other work that we've provided you with here.
I wanna comment what it is on these activities, Brian. So why is this, all these regulatory changes? I mean, it deals with transactions of actual cash, events for football games, basketball games. So that's why your internal control system is so important, and that's why they are drilling down to all these additional bank regulations. Now, I'll tell you, I went to a car show just a few weeks ago, and we went to the deli to buy us a hot dog or a deli sandwich, and they wouldn't take cash money. You had to pay a credit card. So I'm thinking, why? And the deli was owned by the, the large hotel convictions. But I got thinking, why would they do such a thing? And basically, to not have that accountability of cash money, and to have employee theft, theft during, to the time that money makes it to the bank. So that's why they require a card just to even get a, a deli sandwich at a convictions center. And as y'all traveled out to these locations, you'll see that happening around these big companies. They don't wanna handle, expose their risk of handling money. But here, you've got every school has to handle money. So that's why this is drilled down, these regulations that's coming out from the treasury function. But that's just way, you know, times have changed. But we do think all the support with your staff members, your principals, the bookkeepers, so. Any questions, comments?
It does look like you've been extremely thorough.
Well, I mean, it, it, it took, it took a whole team, and your staff people and the principals was a big assistance to us. And they, no, like I said, there were some minor inconsistencies, but they corrected and understood what the proper way to, to strengthen those accounting controls. Anybody else?
We appreciate y'all. If you have any other questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is Mr. Robert Sally. He's gonna go over some maintenance updates.
Good evening to the fiduciaries and members of the board. Just like to present a few items this evening that maintenance has been either working on or assisting with contractors that has been working on various projects throughout the school system. This year, we've had a lot of projects going, and it doesn't seem like it's, uh, it's been a few more projects, and it's been as busy as it's ever been, probably. Obviously, that's due to having a little more money. So, but just like to cover just a few things that maintenance has been associated with or either, like I said, completed the work themselves on. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take any questions from any of you. To run down some items here fairly quickly, one of the things we did, and it's a continuing project, is the installation of some kitchen equipment. We have a lot of kitchen equipment in place that cooks are using out in the schools to prepare meals, meals for the students that are 25 and 30 years old. And so this past year, we actually purchased about 10 different items. We did receive those items back in, uh, the end of June, first of July. And at this time, we actually have, uh, five pieces of equipment installed. We have four pieces staged. And then as long as that's been on order, and then we finally received it away, we had one piece of equipment that was damaged and just received confirmation yesterday. We're gonna be able to get that equipment totally replaced by the manufacturer. So just as far as saying that, just the timelines with this is, there's nothing that happens overnight for us. It's a, it's a long, usually, process for most work that we do. Another item that several of you are aware of, we actually assisted contractors with. We did a lot of just the management in, and then also purchasing or assisting with getting the material, getting that material to the schools and stuff like that for three gym floors, which was Shoemaker Elementary, Weber City Elementary, and Yuma Elementary School. If you haven't seen those gym floors, it wasn't a hardwood floor. It's actually a type of laminate material. But for anybody that's seen it, I think you would agree with it's a very nice job and turned out very good. Each of the schools is very pleased with it. Another item that we did along with flooring is we had the Duffield Primary, Hiltons Elementary, and Rycov Intermediate that we also completed demo work on, and we purchased the material doing the L B T flooring, just like what's underneath your feet at this time. Between the gyms and also the classrooms that we did this past year, did about 33,000 square feet of flooring. And quite good flooring, it's most we've ever done. The gyms was actually about 15,000 square feet of that, and then the classrooms and stuff was about 18,000 square feet of that. So it's a, it's a great improvement for the classrooms. The principals love it, teachers love it, and it's very durable. Get 15-year warranty on it. It's a, it's hard beat. So, and I say sometimes, not really in a joking manner neither. It's the one item that I've been a part of from the maintenance department that there are no complaints about. So the, the L B T flooring upgrade has really been something good for all the schools. We put new fire alarms, we assisted Johnson Controls and new alarm systems at Rycov High School, Weber City Elementary, and Yuma is currently being done at this time. Yuma School is. One of the other items that, speaking about projects that goes on for a long time, we've mentioned it here briefly before, but is new locks and also the Secure-Tech Safe Bolt Systems that we're putting in all the schools. The Safe Bolt, uh, Secure-Tech Safe Bolt Locks is an item similar to a deadbolt device that we're adding to the classroom doors. And then with that, we had to upgrade all of our door handles up to a class one lever door handle for the best operation with the Secure-Tech. I like to use Mr. Smith's words on that, is it's, it's not the 100% gonna stop all type intruders, but it's another layer. And the one biggest thing about this that so many people have just brought so many things to the table and said, hey, can we do this? Hey, can we do that? Can we just put this chain on there, just use it whenever we need to? But for egress during a fire or anything, you have to have single-hand operation to be able to exit a classroom or anything. So you gotta be able to use one hand. You can't use two hands for anything. So the Secure-Tech Safe Bolt is the only item that's out there now that is approved by the state fire marshals for installations on classroom, uh, classrooms is what we're putting them at. After we do that, I'm gonna go back also to where windows are and stuff, and there's a lot of modifications. But we've been working on this project since about 2023 to try to get this into the schools. So along with that, I want to mention to you all, the board members, that we've spent a lot of time talking about this here in the school board office. With the keying system in this, we're gonna be going to a keying system that's gonna be unique to every individual school. All right? And whenever we do this, it's actually classified as an access-through key system. So everybody that's got one of the keys isn't just gonna be able to run to Kingsport or Johnson City and make another key for this. And that's the intent. We have so many people that we have no clue who all has keys to be able to get into our schools. So a big part of this is the intent of, for safety and security of the schools, is to get those exterior doors, number one, locked up. So as, as we go down this road, and it's gonna take a while, I mean, it's gonna take quite a while to get this project done, you're probably gonna hear some complaints from people of, you know, I can't get in the way I used to. And that's not our intent. As I said in the beginning of this, safety and security is not always convenient. So, but we're still gonna have three methods of being able to get into a school from an electronic key we got, to a mechanical key, to our H I D badges. And we're trying to make provisions for that. As we go down this road, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have obstacles that we're gonna have to overcome as we go down this road. But the reason for this system is to increase our safety and security in the school systems. And that's our main intent. Some of the other items that we've been doing, we've put new roofs at Twin Springs High School, which is about 95% complete, for your tech center, which is about 80%. That's some of the racket that you just heard. They're still working to try to get this done, and there was some pain here. I asked Greg Irvin. Greg Irvin has endured a lot here, from all the leaks to the busted ceiling tile, to the trash cans, to mopping up the water and everything. So it was a tough one this time on this one. But we're, we're driving in, and we're getting near the completion of that. Did some renovations at the school board office and assisted contractors with that renovation. Did some bleacher renovations at Gate City High School, Rycov High, and Twin Springs High to help get some handrails into the bleachers, which a lot of people was really asking for out in the community. And one of the things, just maintenance related, I mean, as we assist with all these, there's things that we do as far as demo work. We help some with some of the installation work. We do material purchases for some of the projects. We deliver material to the schools. And the thing is, whenever you're working with contractors, it's, you know, you get a call sometimes at 3 o'clock, hey, I'm ready for that stuff tomorrow. Can you get it to us? You know, and we gotta get a little bit of skid steers. We gotta get things a little bit on trailers, maybe to get it there. It's a lot of just jumping through hoops to get a lot of things done with these contractors. It's not, uh, not always the best, but at the same time, too, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Smith both hear me a lot of times saying, I wanna work with this contractor because we've had good success with them. So we do really work to try to have good contractors and longstanding relationships with contractors that we have used in the school system. But for maintenance alone, not only with all the project work that we've, we've been involved in, still involved in, just to throw it out there, because always just talk about the workload is high in maintenance. We have, since school was starting, which is less than two months, just under two months, we, uh, we've took in about 250 work orders. That's from water lines leaking, the faucets broke, to toilets won't flush, to the classroom door won't close. I had to move a teacher here, need power there, to move the S R O here, need a new computer line here. And they moved another teacher to this office, and they moved a specialist to this office, need power here. So it's not being caused, we can just totally disregard and just focus on projects. It's, it's, it's cause that's taking our attention. And so we've certainly had our share of work from just work orders that's been submitted since school started. One of the biggest projects, excuse me, that we've had going has been, as many of you know about, the Rycov High boiler upgrades. We started this project for planning and design in September 24th. So we're over a year into this project at this time, and we're nearing completion. But at the same time, too, we do have some stuff that's gonna probably drag this project out another three or four months. So whenever I speak to board members about, if we're gonna do projects, I, I can't hear about it in February and March all the time and get it done by June. So, uh, so I'll kind of bring it up just to throw that in there. But we, maintenance ourselves, besides just designing, planning, we physically was on site and started working. Mr. Berry has been great to work with over at Rycov High School. I mean, just been great to work with over there. He's really done everything he can to accommodate all the interference and everything that's been going on. But maintenance ourselves, between the design and ductwork replacement, installing the heating hot water coils for the new split system air conditioning in all the classrooms at Rycov High School, had 22 of them systems that we did. That included drop ceiling work. That included just, you know, electrical work, the control work, closets, building closets, having window things replaced. I mean, so much stuff happened in there. Comfort Systems also installed all new piping throughout the whole school system. They also installed new heating units between the hot water coils that we installed in the ductwork and the new heating fan coil units. We installed over 56 heating systems, heating units over there at Rycov High School this past year. Their whole building will be new heating units, new piping, new boiler for the heating system. And the cooling systems, we probably replaced about 95% of them. And it was due. Don't, don't think it wasn't due. We had boilers over there that was 35 years old. The heating system, some of the heaters and stuff like that's been there since the school was open. About 65, 70 years, almost, whatever. So things was due over there. Also, with that, the new hot water boilers that we put in was LP gas operated. So maintenance, we put in a concrete pad for the gas, uh, tanks to sit on, upgraded the controls, thermostats, and stuff like that, matching the new systems that we put in. And one of the things that's gonna drag the shop, the, the job out a little bit, which is something that's important because indoor air quality is becoming a thing. There was a lot more focus on required testing and everything. Started in July this year. So one of the things that was put in to help this was we're putting in two 100% fresh air units that's gonna serve the main areas where all the students are. And those units are actually scheduled for delivery, I think, first of December. So it's gonna be a little bit before we get those and get those put in. So, once again, Mr. Ferguson and I, Mr. Smith, we talked about it there quite a bit. A large part of this stuff is stuff that people don't see. People don't see the new roofs. People don't see the new piping in the ceiling. They don't see the new rooftop units on the roofs. They don't see the new boilers down in the boiler room. They don't see it, but it is essential to the schools. Mr. Ferguson and I made a commitment several years ago with the new roofs, and we've stayed with that. And I need his commitment to continue to stay with that. So as we work through the obstacles of money and stuff like that that he and I, or he works with mostly and stuff like that, need to, we need to stay on board with that. If we're gonna keep our schools, we gotta keep them dry. That's one of the number one things. So with that, last thing here, Yuma Edition, they've got that grate site cleared out down there. Whenever they cut that grate down there, they actually had to dig out an additional about four foot of that, bring in two foot of stone, bring in two foot of material. They've got that compaction done, got the compaction test back, ready to start digging footers. And then they're hoping that by November, they'll be starting to lay some block. So that's where they're at, Yuma Edition. Mr. Smith, I'm sure I went over my time. I'm sorry, but I've been going.
Any questions?
When do you anticipate starting our project, when we get the money?
Don't have an exact timeline for that. With the, we did go out to bid for that project, and we did have a company that, of course, was, come in as a little bid. We had three different bidders for that. And with the extension with the money and stuff, that was something that I had to go back to the architects and ask them if they could extend their bid, and they have not provided me an answer back on that at this time. Had to ask them for a 60-day extension.
The architects or?
For the contractors. G R C was the contractor that was awarded that. But they was gonna have to extend that price, and we're either, uh, not sure what will be done if they don't. They have to go out to every subcontractor, and I'm thinking they have close to maybe 16, 18 subcontractors. They have to go to every one of those subcontractors. The masons, the steel, every, every bit of the work, everybody's up if it goes on and get those prices back. So. But that is something I've definitely been communicating with the architects. I've been waiting for an answer back on that.
In terms of our roofing, since it's been superintendent, we're about 80%, if not a little bit better, aren't we, Rob, in terms of all of our buildings with, with replacement?
With everything that was really 25 to 30 years old, yeah, probably 80%.
80% complete?
Seven.
80% complete, replaced on all of our roofs?
With the replace, with the replacing of roofs that was in the 25 to 30 year old area. But we still have some buildings out there that's 16 years old, 15 years old, or whatever.
Typically, how long they last?
I'm sorry?
How long they usually last, like?
I have.
I mean, typically, when would you probably want it changed? 25 years or whatever?
20 years is normally the lifespan of it. That's for, especially, the majority of everything we had was the rubber balanced roof, and that's the lifespan of it's 20. We got some that's hitting 30, close to 35 now.
We probably spend, what, millions of dollars on them, doing roofs?
I wish I had that number on, I have the. I wish I had that number on, I'd say we'd be pushing 10 million anyway. So I mean, that's.
I know we've been doing it pretty much since I've been on board.
We, we really started working on them pretty hard in 2013. We started getting a couple little replacements done and then 2014, I think was when we went for the Lebon and actually was able to take on some bigger projects through that. And.
The Edsir and the Harper family really helped us out, I did. And just over time, we've just, Robbie said, we've tackled a problem project after the other, so it's taken some time, but we're slowly but surely getting there.
It'll be time to place again.
It'll be time to place again.
It's our over again.
It's a vicious cycle. It is a vicious cycle. So we don't have to worry about the stone anymore on top of our roofs. Thank goodness.
Got a couple left, it's got that out. Shoemaker, two left in the school board office.
The people are really pleased with the handrails on the bleachers. They are loving that. I've heard that from, I've heard that from people at Twin Springs and people at Rycov are loving it. They really appreciate that.
We need some in the stadium.
Gyms.
Need some in the stadium too, Rob, on the listeners.
We need some of them. We need some, you know, they have it.
Part of the upgrade, that was included in part of an upgrade that we got kind of on the table at this time.
Season's going to be over.
You just kind of run out of time and so forth.
There's no more.
Any other questions?
How many boilers you got left? How many boilers, co-boilers you got left?
Gate City High School is the only one of the co-fired boilers we live. And we do have co-fired boilers in place at Shoemaker, but they've been converted to LP gas with a burner that's just added down to the front of the boiler.
Convert everyone to Gate City? Not you.
Gate City's a little bit of a different animal because it's got Gate City Middle School tied into it. And that's the reason kind of, the biggest thing with that is if you do that, you have to stay with steam. And that's, that's a little bit of a problem, of course. That's the reason we went the way we did at Rycov High School, because our steam system, you know, basically in the, you know, like I said, 65 to 70 year old range. So instead of continuing to use that piping, that's why we went to hot water boilers. We replaced all that piping. You got piping that's underground, you got piping that's in crawl spaces and so it's, it's piping that if you don't do an upgrade that size, it's what we've kind of been talking about some in our shop, is just we do Gate City and they go to hot water also at Gate City. But Gate City Middle School, they can't convert it.
Another recent three or four months on Rycov.
Oh, yes, sir. We're actually, they come over and did some of the commissioning on the, on the boilers last, this past Thursday. And then on the 16th, we've got a, another startup commission of that that we plan on getting them up and running. And then on the 30th, we actually have a, those are, they're lock and bar boilers and the manufacturer will come up and do one of the final tests. But it's, right now, if we had to, we could start up a boiler and operate over there right now. So, but it's just the, the fresh air units is just, it's nothing but fresh air supply into the building is what that is. But we're good to go. We're, we're ready to roll with it. We had to crack some hot water up over there right now, we could for heating.
The fresh air units is what was to know?
Yeah, that's, they're the ones that's not coming in until like first of December, I think that he was saying. That's not any kind of effect towards the heating systems or cooling systems either.
All right, Mr. South, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is, like I said, the VSB A School Board Awards. It's a good recognition afternoon. We have our people recognized. We recognize our superintendent for his VSB A School Board Academy. First, thank you for your commitment to everything that you do on a daily basis. We appreciate it. We also have our chairman, Mr. David Templeton, also of our VSB A School Board Academy from 2023 to 2025. Mr. Templeton, we appreciate your dedication also. Thank you very much. And then our assistant chair that we have here, our VSB A School Board Academy from 2023 to 2025, Michelle, we appreciate your dedication also. All right, thank you for that. And public comment, does anyone wish to address the board, even though I run out of my mouth? Anyone wish to address the board at this time? All right, we'll move along to, and we'll hand it over to Superintendent Mr. Ferguson on his report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package, you will find the final June of 2025. This is the Head Start financial report. If you, unless there's any questions in regards to this report, I ask your approval as presented.
A motion for Mr. Hood?
Second.
Second for Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the financial report for August of 2025. Unless there's any questions in regards to this report, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Ms. Edwards?
I second.
A second for Mr. Mead, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is a baseline grant for the Head Start program. It's application, excuse me, baseline grant application number 03CH013310-02. If you have to copy the narrative, unless there's any questions in regards to this document, this grant application, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that motion. Motion for Mr. Houseright?
Second.
A second for Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
We have our 2025, 26 Head Start program goals. You have the document before you, unless there's any questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that motion. A motion for Mr. Mead, second for Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for 2026. Unless there's any questions or comments in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Ms. Edwards?
Second.
A second for Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the correction plan for Head Start. Unless there's any questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
Motion for Mr. Hood?
I'll second.
Second for Ms. Edwards, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
You will see in your packet, a, the director's report for Head Start for September 2025. Ms. Raymond does provide this course at each of her meetings. Unless you have any questions, this is for informational purposes. If you have any questions, I'll do my very best to answer the best I can. If not, I will give an answer for you, but it's, it's very telling, very nice document.
Are these kids accountable for, I see for some of the tenants. So fair enough there for a certain length of time or something like that. If you had somebody else, whether it's a, it's so or?
They have no sir. Okay.
They, they try to supplement, yes. If a child was to drop out of the program, they, in some cases, they have wait in this. If not, they usually just kind of go out and try to recruit students to participate in the program. They need to keep those percentages up in terms of enrollment, more so than on the attendance.
Okay.
That's just for informational purposes.
Yes, sir. The next item we have, Head Start did make a application and were recipients of a one-time supplemental award for nutrition and healthy eating. If you look on page five of the document, they were awarded in terms of federal monies over $102,000 for the Federal Funds Awards Program. The document you have is an amended budget for the Head Start program for this fiscal year, 2025 to June 2026, which does include this one-time amount. So unless there's any questions in regards to this budget item, I ask your approval of the amended Head Start budget.
I make approval, I make motion, sorry.
Second.
A motion for me, a second for Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all today. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. My understanding we need to go into closed meeting?
Yes, I move that we enter closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and assignment and performance of Head Start personnel, coaches, secretaries, custodians, and cafeteria staff as divided in section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of the Union amended.
I second. So I got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We want to turn it for the last, thank you.